Everybody from staff is present for the exemption of Mr. Brown. And also Corey, he's here, but he's not on my list, but I added you. Okay? Agenda approval. Counsel? You had a chance to go over the agenda. Do you have any objections, any questions? With the desire of counsel?
Move to approve.
A second.
Okay, got a motion by Counselor Hancock and a second by Counselor Vasquez to prove the agenda. Counselor Hancock?
Yes.
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Oh, and Counselor Frosto is on Zoom, sorry. Counselor Frosto?
Yes.
Counselor Vasquez?
Yes.
I also vote yes, motion passes. Invocation, do we have anybody for invocation tonight? And Counselor Hart stepping in, so we'll give her a few minutes to settle in. Are you here for invocation? You are? Okay, everyone, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for our pledge of allegiance.
Can we bow our heads? And let us pray in the Father, Son, and Holy Ghost, Holy Spirit. Father, I just want to just pray for the city of Sunnyside and pray for those who are seated with this council this evening. Lord, I want to pray Psalms, Isaiah 11:2, it states, "The Spirit of wisdom be poured out upon you, wisdom, understanding, counsel, knowledge, and the fear of the Lord." Father, I pray for these people who you've hand chosen to help our city. Father, I pray for unity in this place. I pray for wisdom. Once again, I pray for understanding. I pray that everybody can be clothed with compassion and humility, Lord, that there would be no division as we come together in unity and in love for the main purpose to serve our city, which is Sunnyside. Lord, bless this time, bless this space, and we invite you to be here and be a part of this conversation, Lord, and help them to lead. In Jesus' mighty name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please. Public comments. Citizens are advised that they must limit their remarks to the city council to three minutes. Counsel may refer items to staff to review and/or research for presentation at a future council meeting. Recorded comments and meetings, signing sheets are public records, subject to disclosure under RCW 42.56, and the names of speakers are recorded into the meetings, into the meeting minutes. We have one for tonight, Mr. Salas. Please state your name and city of residence.
Ernesto Salas, Sunnyside. I stand before you today to debate a policy, not to debate a policy, but to defend the spirit of our community, one that believes in trust, opportunity, and fairness. There's a proposal on the table, a juvenile curfew. On the surface, it may sound like a solution, keep young people off the streets and crime will decrease. But let's look beyond the surface and ask ourselves, do curfews truly protect our youth or do they punish them? The truth is clear, curfews don't reduce crime. Studies across the countries have found no substantial evidence that restricting young people's movement at night leads to safer communities. In fact, some cities have seen crime rise during curfew hours. Crime isn't a clock. It doesn't simply vanish when the hand hits the curfew time. More importantly, curfews send the wrong message to our youth, a message of distrust rather than guidance. Sunnyside should be a city that empowers its youth, its young people, not one that criminalizes them for stepping outside. We should be investing in mentorship programs, recreation centers, opportunities that keep them engaged, not curfews that assume guilt or innocence. And let's not forget who these laws disproportionately affect. Studies have shown that juvenile curfews often lead to unnecessary police encounters with young people from marginalized communities. Instead of protecting kids, curfews create an environment where youth, especially those of color, feel targeted rather than supported. This is not the Sunnyside we want to build. So what should we do instead? We should focus on real solutions, education, engagement, and strong community relationships. Sunnyside should be a city where young people are seen as future leaders, not as problems to be contained. We should replace restrictions with opportunity, replace limitations with guidance, replace curfew with care. Let's say no to fear-based policies. Let's say yes to investing in our youth, trusting them, and building a community where they thrive, not just at sunrise, but at sunset too. I've been here long enough in Sunnyside to know when they enacted two juvenile curfews in the 90s. One was from 6:00 to 3:00 p.m., the second one was from 9:30 to 6:00 a.m. Those did nothing to affect the crime. If anything, things got worse. I got fined, well, my parents got fined, three different times. They had to pay $500 off, so it came out to $1,500. One, because I was coming out of the Moop Theater, and it's just like a block away from my house. They caught me coming out, hit my dad with the fine, took me home. I was walking across the street from a friend's house, just a few minutes past curfew, hit me with another $500 fine. I was across the street, hit me with another one. I didn't have to pay that because I was a kid, but my father did, and we were all struggling. And I couldn't really tell him when the exact day was, because I couldn't remember, because they didn't stop me. They didn't, they just told me, took me home sometimes, and then they hit me with the fine later. And I just want our community to sit there and start trusting our youth, start building programs that would deal with certain things that they're dealing with, rather than focusing on punitive actions, or asking, you know, the police department to almost act as individuals that have to chase these kids around. And I drive around Sunnyside at night, sometimes I work late, I don't see anybody on the streets. And the people that I do see are the ones they see all the time. And so I'm just asking the council to seriously think about the policies that you're putting in place and how that's going to affect the relationship between the police department and the community.
Salas?
Yeah.
Sorry, the three minutes are up, right?
Time is up, yes.
Do I get a 30-second warning?
Well, if there's 30 seconds...
Counselor? Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't need any more time. I'm just saying, it would have been easy if you would have gave me 30 seconds and I could have closed it up.
Yeah, I completely forgot about it.
That's all right.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Ms. Salas.
So yeah, I'm just going to wrap and say, like, I think we just need to seriously think about that. If we want to invest in our community's future, let's do it through programs like mentorship, like one of the ones that I have, and instead of trying to criminalize everything. I understand the reasoning behind it, and I respect it, but take it from the experience, it doesn't, it doesn't work. So thank you guys for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Salas. Okay, counsel, let's get going on our consent agenda. Yes, go ahead. Counsel, is it okay if we allow him to speak?
Yeah, go for it.
What's your names?
My name's Dave Cortinas. I'm a publisher and investigator reporter for La Voz Hispanic newspaper out of Tri-Cities, a statewide publication of 30 years of this month. As an investigator reporter, I, the news of Mr. Gonzalez being put on leave enticed my emotions to come and investigate all that goes on here in Sunnyside. And my investigation is really a serious damaging to see all that's going on and what's been happening here, especially with the towel incident that was, that had something to do with you and I, we contacted the hotel where you guys stayed, and we got, and then we got information that that, those towels that was being pinned on by councilwoman saying that the bill was Mike Gonzalez, which it wasn't. That was your towel incident. And it was said damaging towels. Well, either they're damaged or they were stolen. And the explanation we got was that the towels were missing. And so they don't like telling their guests that somebody stole towels. They would prefer to put them under the damaging of these towels being missing. So while your councilwoman tried to pin that on Mr. Gonzalez, you sat there and allowed that to happen when you knew that was all on your hands. Also, as to Mr. Bridges, Mr. Bridges has had several disagreements and problems from 2007, 2011, and right now arguing and fighting with the city about some damages that happened out at the, out at the Catholic Charities Development along Allen Road. And he doesn't want to pay those bills. And he's been arguing with the city and also arguing about who's going to pay and who's not going to pay. He didn't do a due process. You guys had a gentleman come here and asked to be the person to take the place of Mr. Gonzalez. He came and did his interview. He came and did, did due process. Mr. Bridges didn't have any due process. He was just brought in because you wanted him, you wanted him to be, that guy was yours and councilwoman's decision, and asked to, asked to put...
30-second warning.
Down as, thank you, asked to put him in without any due process. Also, you had a woman, Mrs. Estrada, come in and sit in the executive session, and it was said that she had a consultant contract with the city. She doesn't have a contract, a consulting contract with the city, and she still was allowed by you councilpeople to allow her to sit in the executive session, which I know is against law. I cover a lot of city councils, from Pasco to Tri-Cities to Auburn, now Sunnyside. And I find that allowing someone to, third party, can you give me 30 seconds like you gave the other gentleman?
Gave him 30-second warning.
Thank you.
We gave you the...
Yeah, I'll finish, I'll finish. I know, I saw the clock. I was down to 30 seconds. I think, I think I have 30 seconds more to finish.
No, that's not how it works, sir.
Oh, no, you're going to give somebody else 30 seconds, but you won't give me 30 seconds.
Your time is up.
Okay, well, I have copies to hand. Who do I hand these copies to? Oh, my fact finding. One for every councilperson. I have those. All these things have been...
I missed up, sir.
Have been vetted, and we have a lot of members in the community that continue feeding us more information, and we'll be coming back with more information.
Your time is up.
Thank you very much.
Order.
Okay, counsel, let's continue consent agenda. Payroll check registry, approve payroll transactions number 5941 through 6163 and wire transfers as listed, $606,978.67 for the period ending June 18, 2025. Claim vouchers, approve check registry, registered transaction number 6203 through 6305 and wire transfers as listed, $121,575.83 for the period ending on June 17, 2025. And May 2025 income statement for informational purposes only. Counsel, do you wish to pull any items for discussion?
Well, I want to pull the 2025 income statement for information purposes only.
Anyone else?
Mine doesn't go to 6305. My check register ends at 6154. Does anybody else's go to 6305?
No.
Which one does yours end, 61?
Mine goes to...
61?
6154. Well, it goes to 61...
63?
63. 6163?
Yeah.
It's what mine goes to, too.
Me, too.
The one that's supposed to be 6163 is registered here?
Well, yep, but all the numbers must be off then.
No, they're, I'm looking at it, and it does go to 6305.
All the printout that I got today, it goes to...
Maybe it's the printed version, but the online version does go to 6305.
Yeah, it goes down up to 6163, but there are some numbers above that are like 6271, for example.
Okay, that's...
So it's just a little bit, yeah, everywhere. I'd like to pull, let me go back to my page. I'd like to pull 6016.
Okay, let's start with Ms. Hancock.
Okay, well, on the, on the income statements, very difficult to read, but I see a pattern on here that I think that would be good for the finance committee to take up and discuss with Ms. Kosky what, what, what is going on there unless she can answer it tonight. But I see professional services in almost every department is well over budget.
Where are you seeing that?
In the 2025 income statement. The city clerks is, was budgeted for $30,000. They're at $38,287 already this year. Centralized Services was $2,500 budgeted. They're at $56,350.9. Janitorial Services are $5,000. They're at $60,888.86. Jail Services just slightly above their budget, but it's budgeted for, I assume, longer than, we have more to do. Sewer, $1,500. It's 4163. Public Works, $125,000, $189,251.59. So I just think it's worth counsel looking into to see. Stormwater, $4,500. It's 59596, but I know we did some mapping there, so that probably has something to do with that. But I think it would be good for the finance committee to go over that, see what, what, just to have a better idea of what's going on there.
I definitely agree with you. Ms...
I would certainly be happy to go over the income statement with the finance committee, answer any questions that I can. Keep in mind that I did not create the 2025 budget that we have now, but I would be happy to discuss it with a subcommittee at any time.
Okay, yeah, go ahead and shoot us off an email, and we can decide what date works for all of us.
I will.
Counselor Vasquez?
Yeah, let me go back to my page.
You had 6016?
Yes. So there's a name missing there, so I'm just curious as to why, or who that belongs to.
There was an email...
Regarding?
Regarding this, yeah.
Okay, so it's just not going to be open to the public then?
It's, I believe the lawyer's still reviewing it, correct? And they're going to get back to us as to how to move forward.
I did read it, yeah.
I think there is a RCW that refers to, if you remember the email, that refers to the redaction of, in this particular case, redaction of the name on the payroll in protection of whoever the employee is. It's something to do, it's in our RCWs, has to do with domestic violence, sexual assault, RCWs. So that's why that would be redacted, if you remember the email.
Yeah, I did, I did read the email.
And that's, and that's why it is. It's, it's been on the books for quite a long time.
Yeah, I read the email. However, like, all the information's out on public everywhere. If I search up a name, it shows up everywhere.
It probably could, but when it's presented that way.
Counselor Hart, please, let's keep order.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Counselor Vasquez, I believe we, it doesn't set a matter, and it sounds like the attorneys are looking into it, so I would...
Yeah, I'd just like to be followed up with stuff.
Yeah, no, definitely, definitely. If the attorney can follow up, that'd be awesome. And I believe that is it, right? Nobody else had any other items? What is the desire of counsel?
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Counselor Hart, second by Counselor Hancock. Any debate? Hearing none. I'll go down the aisle, go down the row. Counselor Hancock?
Yes.
Counselor Vasquez?
Yes.
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Hart?
Yes.
Counselor Frosto?
Yes.
I also vote yes, motion passes.
Something I wanted to say, too, just on general on these, is these cover letters, the, the cover letter says item title, and then it says submitted by, choose an item. Can we be more complete, making sure that the name of the person who is submitting those is on there? I saw that about three times, and, and I'd like to see that, that the person submitting it has their name on there.
I can certainly check with the attorney on that. I believe that is because of the previous issue that was brought up against the survivor of domestic violence in rural and state protection.
I think what she's meaning on the items, on the individual items, like the next one...
The tip report?
On the covers.
Yeah, on the cover page.
Item on the agenda.
I care, that's the...
And deputy mayor, in the past, we didn't include an agenda cover sheet for payroll vouchers and accounts payable, so maybe I can get with Kelly to not add this unless it's something you'd like to do moving forward.
I mean, I don't see, I don't see why we need it, but it's ultimately up to counsel.
Yeah, I don't think it's needed. That actually took me for a surprise this time. I don't know what others may feel or think.
I, I'm fine with admitting it. I just want it to be right if it's in our packet.
Okay, we'll remove it for future meetings. Let's continue our active agenda. Six-year transportation improvement plan presentation, and set a date for public hearing, allowing the city clerk to proceed with advertising the hearing. Counsel, do we have any direction as to when we want to do this public hearing? We have either July 7th, the study session, or July 14th, regular meeting.
Can we just do it at a regular meeting?
So July 14th? Doesn't, is there any deadlines, do we know? Is it the sooner the better, or would July 14th work? Go, go ahead, Stephanie.
Well, this is Stephanie Ray, HLA, her engineer. She will be talking about this year's six-year tip, which is transportation improvement plan presentation that we have here. Ms. Ray, please begin.
Deputy members of council, interim city manager, deputy public works director, it's a mouthful. Thank you for having me here tonight. Thank you for your question, jumping right into that. And so the, the way these tips work and going a little bit out of order about trying to address your question, last year, we had presented the tip, and the idea was to bring it to you in discussion, you know, so that you had a chance to review it before we went into the public hearing. So a couple steps that need to happen is a public hearing does need to be scheduled. That'd be scheduled by the city clerk. There is a timeframe to schedule that. We have to advertise it in the paper, and then that dates, then how long the public has, it's available for public comment. Then the third part of officially adopting the tip is after the public hearing, it's officially adopted by city council. And so those are dates that we have to have to put into the Wash dot database in order to submit it. Once the city, once it's done at the city level, we submit to the MPO, RTPO, and they submit to the state. And so at every single level, there's a public comment period. So historically, YVCOG would like to have these before August, meaning that the public hearing and the city adoption happens in the month of July. In previous years, the public hearing and city adoption has happened during the same meeting to try to condense the schedule, also recognizing that if any comments are received at the public hearing, we would need to adopt, knowing that those comments need to be addressed, and then address those comments and submit. So you have two options. You can do two separate meetings, one for the public hearing, one for the adoption, or you can do the public hearing and adoption at the same meeting.
Counsel, are we still good then for July 14th, or do you want to do it on the study session on the 7th?
The 14th would be fine.
July 14th, okay. July 14th it is. Ask our city clerk to get that scheduled, and we'll continue with, are you doing a presentation today?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and do a quick review of the projects, answer any questions. Counsel may have, know that this is fairly informal, but we just want to make sure that you're understanding of the process, and we have a relatively short tip to review. And Jackie, it might be better to bring up the tip map. We include the Wash dot sheets. We think it's important for you to understand all the parts and pieces, if you have questions on them. This is what the MPTO and the state review. So of particular note in those tip sheets, there is a column that says priority number. That does not necessarily mean that's a priority of the project. It's more of a project number. Every project is required to have a number. So Project 9 is not any more important than Project 1, but just want to make sure that that's clarified. So we have nine projects in total. Now, and I'll try to point these out as we go through these. Several of these are already partially funded or we're waiting for funding, and it means that we have to keep these on the tip until all the paperwork is complete. Then once we have something called obligation, where the money is actually yours, then we can take the project off the tip. Also, now you only see nine projects here. We can amend this tip at any time throughout the year. So if there is particularly a funding program that comes along and we go, hey, this is going to be the perfect project, we can amend this tip so that we can submit for that funding application. So the first one, and if counsel remembers, this is the First Street and Yakima Valley Highway Intersection Improvements. We received a partial grant, 100% grant, last year through a program called Surface Transportation Block Grant to do a roundabout there at Number 1, intersection of YVH and First. So really exciting project. We're keeping it on the list because we're looking then for that partial construction funding. Number two is pedestrian safety improvements. There are two spot locations. The city has a city safety plan, and at those two locations, there was a pedestrian that was either fatally injured or seriously injured, and we were able to leverage and get funding for those two locations. That project is going through a process called obligation, so it's on the list until we can, are able to work through all the funding requirements for the Wash dot. Project 3, and also Project 5. So to diversify the tip, we have two major thoroughfares coming into the city from the north, Project 5 and Project 3. And you'll see that they go from YVH all the way up to the north city limits. These are generally existing corridors that need maybe some sidewalk, have some sidewalk gaps, but the road surface is deteriorating. We can do some more crack sealing, we can do some chip sealing, but ultimately, those two roadways need to be resurfaced. So Projects 3 and 5 are arterial preservation, which fits well into several sources of money for pavement preservation projects. The one I didn't talk about in the middle, 4, this is a citywide ADA. So we have completed what's called a self-evaluation of the city's ADA system, sidewalks, curb ramps, crosswalks. The total need in the city is millions. So we're continuing to keep a project on the list for citywide ADA ramps, surround of $1 million. So that allows you to show ADA is important to our city. We're continuing to find funding for ADA. You're on your second phase right now in a series of ADA ramps. So, you know, as we move forward and find funding, we'll be back to try to prioritize. Right now, we're focusing on schools. Likely, the schools will, will work on all the routes to schools, and we'll start focusing on the downtown, start working on the commercial core, and just continue to work out. So now this is going to be a multi-multi-year, multi-phase project. Project 6, right in your downtown core. This particular one, this is an extension of your downtown revisal... Uh, this particular one, uh, this is an extension of your downtown revisalation. This is identified through a very lengthy, um, outreach process back in 2011. And so this would be, uh, a continuation of the bullbowl, the, the sidewalks, the, the street trees, the, the street lighting. That is the, the next phase that was identified. Project seven, way over there on the right-hand side, it's up at highway 241. So I think most folks know that, uh, coming from Edison and trying to get onto highway 241 or vice versa is, um, can, can be very difficult. So, uh, Wash dot has funding to do a roundabout right at that location. But to put that roundabout in, we need a widened bridge structure. Uh, the approach onto highway 241 is, is too short. The, the bridge does not yet qualify for funding, but we're keeping this one on the list in tandem with a Wash dot project so that, uh, since that funding becomes available, we're able to leverage, uh, your tip to, uh, compete for that funding. Project number eight, all the way down at the southern end is, um, Midville and Alexander. There is a signal that's there. Um, this is more, this project will be driven by economic development. Uh, if, if counsel recalls, uh, the signal flashes yellow in one direction and red in the other. So the signal isn't complete and as additional traffic becomes, uh, as a port develops kind of on that south end, there'll be a need to develop that into a full traffic signal. And project number nine, the last one, this is a very exciting project for everybody, I think. Um, the city is in receipt or will be receiving 100% grant money to do a corridor study and 60% level design on Yakima Valley Highway from first to 16th. And with this money, uh, there's, um, we had to count them, there's 89 parcels. And, uh, over a five-year period, there's been several hundred accidents along that stretch. So, uh, this project is funded, but we're waiting for all the obligations to happen. And, uh, you know, during this, this work, we'll be looking at the entire corridor, uh, looking to see if it should be a three-lane, a four-lane, a boulevard section. So, um, all, it's a brainstorming, all, all ideas are on the table, so. And again, um, those are the nine projects. Um, we are happy to add anything onto the list that anyone feels is a priority. Any questions?
Counsel, any questions?
Looks very comprehensive to me.
I have one question. Um, and you said you're working on, on securing fundings, both at state and federal. Is there any funding right now that you're in the mix of securing and can you share any of it?
Of course. Uh, so throughout the year, the funding programs present themselves and the question is, is the funding program a good fit and where, will the project compete well? Uh, Transportation Improvement Board has a current call for applications. Um, no, and any of these can compete well for TIB money. Uh, the TIB money was, um, how do you want to say that restricted or cut by the state? So there's not as much money as what there typically is. And TIB also requires a 15% cash match. So that is one thing that we have to, um, account for as we're working through these funding applications is typically they want, uh, certification that that match is available. So, uh, we have to be careful with our current TBD and, you know, uh, cash on hand, uh, when we're making those decisions. Uh, and so also we, we are in kind of what's called the mid-biennium where, uh, most of the state programs will be coming out early, um, March in, uh, 2026. Uh, so we'll be applying to Safe Route School, we'll be applying to Bike Ped. Uh, we'll also be applying to Community Development Block Grant, which, um, is a robust program. And so there's, there's a number of these that are continuing and will continue throughout the year. Hopefully that helps. I, I can talk about this for a long time.
No, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Ray.
Very good.
Well, uh, without further questions, I thank you and we'll see you July 14th.
That's good. Thank you.
Appreciate what you do, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on to the next one, uh, 2025 Fourth of July fireworks show funding request, uh, Mr. Interim City Manager.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Deputy Mayor. So, uh, this is obviously this is my, my first meeting, so excuse me if I'm not too far up in speed, I'm, I believe that, um, uh, council member Hart, uh, requested some, uh, money for the Lions Club for the, uh, Fourth of July, um, uh, fireworks show, if that's correct?
Correct.
Yeah, and so, um, this is a resolution to approve that, uh, $5,000, uh, to show our support for the Lions Club for the Fourth of July fireworks.
Counsel, any questions? Uh, yes, counsel. Do you want to do a quick?
I just wanted to do a quick, but go ahead, Ms. Ripley. I can come back.
Okay. Um, this was not in the budget and did you guys have, did the, um, was this, is this already in the works and you're now asking for the money?
This is the same time every year that we ask for the money, uh, for the fireworks. We've been asking for it since 19, um, I believe it's about 1995.
Isn't it usually?
And it has been, it has been every year, every year, it has been included in the budget at some place because of the upheaval and different, uh, different, uh, financial directors. It would have been in the one for, for, uh, 2024, 25. It wasn't in the one for 25 because we had a new director and nobody in the department and or in cities, in the city manager's seat were aware of it. It came to our attention, um, much later in the game that it wasn't in there and that's why we made the request for, to see if there was some money that we could have. Uh, and it has been $5,000 every year, uh, since 1995. And the, and the council has been very generous with, uh, helping to support that. They get, um, one of the things that's been a safety, because the reason that we did it originally was because it was a, um, uh, fireworks were banned within city limits as a safety issue, completely banned. There wasn't supposed to be any fireworks at all. So the, the Lions Club came together with a couple of other groups to put together a fireworks, a public wire fireworks show and the city thought it, because that was a safety issue, that they would get, uh, would, would support that and, uh, put money in, I think a discretionary fund that is available out there. I'm not exactly sure. I'm sure Kelly could give us a better, uh, where she found it and, uh, uh, kind of, kind of situation there. But it was because a safety matter because there was an all-out ban on fireworks and had been until just last year or so, when the city, the, uh, the council decided to change that they could have however many days to blow fireworks, you know, the regular fireworks, not the pyrotechnic, uh, safety fireworks that we use at our shows each year. And, um, I can answer any other questions on that.
Counsel, any questions?
Well, I, I know, uh, until recently I was a lion and I know that this had come up much earlier and I, I wish.
Counselor Lynn?
I wish Lions Club would have asked, uh, ahead of time. I think, uh, Julia knows how the budget works and I think it's, um, we don't know where the budget is yet and I'm, I'm not real comfortable with all of a sudden finding $5,000 that we don't need somewhere else. And I, I know that the show will still go on without it.
Perhaps. Perhaps not.
You've, you've got money in the account.
Counselors, one at a time, counselors, please. Um, yes, counselor.
Can I ask Kelly where she found the 5,000 for it?
So, excuse me, there is, um, funds that are available over in the Department of Executive Services and there's $18,000 that was budgeted total. So far, there has been little spent out of that and we're almost in July. And so there is, uh, as of today, $11,012.95 available that is unspent.
With which item? Item?
Executive expenses, did you say?
It's under executive services, which is 513. And it's, um, that particular item is under professional services.
And we've already spent $6,000 of that, Kelly?
Yes, uh, excuse me, of the 18 that was budgeted.
We, but we spent six out of that and we're halfway through the year, so we may have more expenses out of there. So we may not have the $5,000 to put in there. If we're halfway through the year, that'd be $12,000. So I, I, I can't see that we necessarily have the $5,000.
Any other questions or remarks by Counselor Hart?
I'd like to. So I, me?
Go ahead, Counselor Vasquez.
So I personally, I also would have hoped to have had this brought up to us earlier on, just because we're what, like maybe one week before the event and we are right now on a very, very tight budget. So, I mean, I would have appreciated having some more time. That way even finance committee could meet and try to find a resource or some ways to be able to provide this money and feel 100% sure that we're able to cover this expense for the community. That's all I have to say.
Counsel, Counsel Frosto, do you have anything to add?
Can y'all remind me when this, um, when, when this conversation came to counsel? Was it just a couple of weeks ago?
Yes.
The request, yes, a couple of weeks ago.
How, um, Counselor Hart, uh, how early in advance is, uh, this money usually asked for in previous years?
In previous years, we've asked for it and usually the, in the middle of June or at the end of May, usually didn't get it until just a few days before the fireworks has been, uh, that's how it has happened in the last several, 10, 15 years. Um, because it wasn't, it was a no-brainer as much as the money was there in the executive services. Um, and I don't think that amount in the executive services changed much, gone up or gone down very much, it's pretty much stayed right at 18,000. And, um, so, um, there was never been a, a question about it before. This year, um, just, you know, usually we get the check and when the fireworks show is over, then we pay the bill. Um, so, but this year we're falling short and we really do need the support of the city, uh, to finish the, the, um, the, um, funding of the fireworks this year. We don't, we're, we're behind, low on our budget. Everything's gone up in prices, even the fireworks have gone up in prices for the kind of show we want to do, um, as well as all the, the, using the, the football field and getting the vendors licenses and so forth. Everything has gone up and I don't see that it's, I, I, I guess I can see where you're, where you're coming from worried that the money is not there, but the money is there and that is with purpose for why that money was put there. And I know that, uh, and Ms., and Ms. Hancock, having been on the council for a number of years prior and knows that as well. Um, I'm absolutely at your, your mercy as to whether or not you're going to fund this particular project. Um, but it has been, and this year, we have had like thousands of people come to the fireworks show where they had safe and sane, um, fireworks put on by licensed pyrotechs, not my Uncle Don in the backyard. Um, and so they, and they don't blow across into my neighbor's yard. They stay, they're well managed as far as where the ashes and so forth go. We have, uh, uh, usually have a, um, a little patriotic ceremony that happens. We usually have a little, uh, we have the vendors come in and sell their hot dogs and tacos and, and, uh, fruit cups and, and all that stuff and other goodies for the kids. So it's really, it's really been a community event. Um, I just, I just really think in the terms of safety for the community, it is a safety event. It is well, well managed now with the, the firemen. They've always been on standby. The fire, uh, police force has always been on standby and then done, even on a number of nights where we actually had shootings in town, the policemen did a really great job of covering, um, the, where the, where the fireworks were happening. Um, again, I, I just, um, at your mercy as to whether or not you want to fund this particular amount of money, $5,000. I really appreciate it.
If you would hear. Deputy Mayor, may I?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, look, I, I've, um, I remember, um, this show going on growing up. I think, um, you know, I think it's been a staple of, of our, uh, it's, it's a staple event in our community for as long as I can remember. Um, I was there last year, uh, serving in a capacity as a Lion member, um, volunteering my time and I just remember seeing so many children having so much fun and engaging in safe activities. Um, we talked so much about, um, youth safety and youth programming and family programming and investing in community. Um, our permitting just went up to $50. Um, so if we talk about money, um, we're in the middle of an internal investigation where we're paying $325 an hour for an investigation while we have our current city manager on paid administrative leave and also paying his salary and paying the interim, uh, city manager's salary. So I mean, if this is about money, um, um, it's, it's, it's really confusing to me right now and I, I believe in investing in our community and I believe in community joy. Um, so I, I will, um, uh, refer to, to the experts. Kelly, you're saying there's, there's, there's money available. Um, if we can turn around and invest this into community, into safe activities and joyful community, uh, uh, activities for a community, then I will 100% support that.
Mr. Mayor? Counsel Ripley, you had a question?
Yeah. Um, I remember years ago when, uh, the fireworks show wasn't going to go on and there were cans put around downtown to help out with it. Um, I think that should have been done this year. You know, we raised the taxes on the citizens to, to go for the pool and all of a sudden we have money for fireworks and, um, we're in a budget crunch. I just, I just don't, um, I don't know. I don't understand.
Counselor Hancock?
Well, uh, uh, back to a couple of things. We ask everybody for the LTAC money and everybody to be ahead of the budget so we know what's going into the budget, so there's no surprises. And, uh, I do believe that Ms. Hart and, um, the Lions Club know that. We, we haven't always waited till the last minute because I've been on council and it was in the budget and, and it should have been in the budget. And, um, with, with the way the, um, fireworks ordinance changed, um, the, the community celebration wasn't what it was last year. And, um, it had, it, it was a lot less attended because people were shooting off their own fireworks. So, you know, yes, it's, it was a safety thing before when there weren't other fireworks and it was a community thing, but now we've got fireworks and they're going off now and, you know, there's, it's, it's, it, they still can have the celebration. They've still got money for fireworks. They can still have the celebration and they can still do the things with the kids and have the vendors there. Um, you know, that's a, that's a club decision and, you know, I think it's only fair when we ask other people to get in before budget that, that the service groups also get in before budget.
Counsel Vasquez, yeah, something to add?
Yeah, and you know, I, I have no doubts about it being an amazing event. I've attended it myself many, many years and I've also been a volunteer and it's been a really good event. Um, my concern is just this is at the end of the day taxpayer dollars and, you know, you, Counselor Hart, you mentioned, you said something right now. You said it's a no, it was a no-brainer. It used to be a no-brainer, but now year after year, years are changing, the budget's changing. Years ago, we weren't in a million-dollar deficit as we are now and we're currently always looking at monies and making sure that we have enough to cover so, so many expenses that we have. And it's not about ju- just not wanting to provide something for community, but just the fact that it is brought late is where my concern is because I would have very, very much liked it to be brought up sooner, just so we could cover all, all ends. Just moving for, moving forward.
What, what I would like to add, if I could, might be?
Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
Question. Um, is the money that is in the executive services, is that money that ever transferred to another fund, to another department?
No, it is not.
So the money that's in the executive services fund is directly for what kinds of things? It's a discretionary fund?
So to, I can't speak to this particular budget because I did not create it, but typically executive services are for different items that come before the council that are helping organizations throughout the community. It's under professional services because I believe that is the correct bars code for it. I don't like how it's, I'd rather call it contingency, but the bars manual doesn't like that. And so I know in my past experience, it was used at the, uh, council's discretion for other items that came out throughout the year that they felt were important.
And Kelly, can I ask you something? What, what was the 6,000 out of the 18,000? What, where did that go?
So it went to several different, um, vendors and I'd be happy to, uh, pull a list of the detail for you so that you uh, pull a list of the detail for you so that you could see each one of those payments if you'd like.
Yeah, that would be great, but.
And Counsel, just uh, before I continue, just remember to get my attention so I could call on you for anything. Um, what I would like to add is um, we, we worked on this two thousand twenty-five budget, you know, the better half of last, you know, the fourth quarter and we passed the two thousand twenty-five budget. And I remember being there in the, in the finance subcommittee and the city manager was also there, um, Mr. Gonzalez and the previous administrative services director. And it was a, it was just one item. It was, it was item, it was listed as, as fireworks and as a group, we decided to remove it. My concerns are the same with, with the rest of the counselors is, you know, where was the objection then when we were going through the two thousand twenty-five budget? Um, I would have loved to hear then and, and you know, maybe even come up with ideas of some sort of fundraising or, or, or maybe um, you know, hitting up the local businesses for, for sponsorship, you know, I would have been more than happy to participate. But you know, they're, they're right, it's two weeks, two weeks from now, um, are the fireworks, have, have, have they been already ordered and?
Yes, they have.
Okay. So something like this um, not being funded, what, what does that do to that?
Pardon?
What does that do to, to that order?
Five thousand dollars short.
Gotcha. Okay.
Is, can I mention?
Go ahead.
One more thing, you, uh, Ms. Counselor Ripley in- indicated that we did use to put up jars um, around town and various businesses. Um, unfortunately, those jars sometimes just disappeared right off the counters and we got to the point where the different businesses didn't want us to bring them in because they didn't want to leave something out there. There would just be something that, you know, I see it, it's got money in it and I take it. Same reason why a lot of different fundraisers are not done with jars and things on counters now for that very same reason, I, I believe. But in any case, we, we have gone around to different visitors, uh, different businesses and gotten some money. We've uh, anticipate getting some money from the hospital. Uh, we anticipate getting some money from the uh, Yakima Valley uh, commissioners. We also, and one of the other, the things that we are doing for the Fourth of July, if I may speak to that, is we've gone together with the Sunnyside Police Department uh, Foundation and a number of different businesses in town to offer a free pool day. Uh, since the pool is going to be open, we thought we'd rent the pool. And so we raised the money to do that. And while we were busy raising money for the pool to have the pool open, we kind of let the other one slide for the request for the fireworks. Just, just no, no good explanation for that. But we will have the pool open and that's in part, great, great deal of uh, cooperation from uh, the Police Foundation and several businesses here in town, uh, both insurance businesses, um, uh, the varietal down here and um, several others, including a, a bank. So um, you know, we can go back out, we, I, you know, if the decision by the council is just to not deny the five thousand dollars for the fireworks uh, fund, um, I guess then we'll just figure out a way to come back next year and ask again.
Um, and then one more thing, Counsel, if I may, um.
I'm being a little fatalistic right now, I think.
We, we also have the option to, if, if you, if council doesn't like that amount of five thousand to, you know, you reduce it to whatever amount uh, council feels that it should be. Um, so with that being said, what is the desire, Counsel? Motion?
Can I make the motion?
Sure.
I might as well, since I don't hear any great, great run to the mic. But if, if that is, if, if that five thousand dollars is, is too much, then I would like to make a motion to ask for at least um, three thousand for the fireworks.
Mr. A second?
Display.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Counselor Hart and a second by Counselor Vasquez to approve resolution authorizing three thousand dollars to the Sunnyside Lions Club to support the two thousand twenty-five Fourth of July fireworks show. Is there any debate? Hearing none?
Appreciate, appreciate anybody's support on this. Thank you.
Hearing none? Counselor Hancock?
No.
Counselor Vasquez?
Yes.
Counselor Ripley?
No.
Counselor Hart?
Yes.
Counselor Frosto?
Yes.
I also vote yes. Motion passes. Thank you, Counsel. Um, let's continue to item C, Fire Department fireworks display standby fee resolution amendment. Mr. Interim City Manager.
Yes, this item be uh, uh, discussed with, by uh, Chief Cameron Hober.
Chief Cameron?
Hello again, Counsel. Uh, just follow up from our last meeting where we uh, had some discussion regarding when to put in the uh, standby fees effective date. So we had some um, kind of discussion on it and kind of came to a consensus in order to uh, write the previous amendment and make it, uh, make it whole. Uh, we're just proposing to amend the previous resolution to reflect the uh, uh, amended or updated um, effective date. So I stand for any questions.
Counsel, any questions? Go ahead, Counselor.
So the fees, once, once the, the fees have all been amended and they will, they will be published then and the local paper of publications?
I'm sorry, I don't understand your question.
The question, once the, the fees are set and then incorporated into the municipal code, uh, is there also a plan to perhaps um, have those published within the local newspapers, uh, paper of record?
Uh, that is outside of my uh, wheelhouse. So I, I don't think I could answer that question. I don't know if that's uh, practice of the city or not.
Okay, our, yes, our fee schedule is adopted by resolution. So it's simply uploaded to our website once it's approved by council.
Okay.
And what this does with the amended data is it makes that process much cleaner and smoother. So it just goes into effect the beginning of twenty-six. So when that um, new fee schedule is published, it's just a part of that versus being another amendment in the middle of the year.
Counsel, any questions? I just have one question. So we, we, you have an idea of who uses this service, right? Is there a way that we could, I guess, send an email to those organizations um, or nonprofits, just to give them a heads up?
Sure. And so what we're actually doing this year, working with um, with Cory and, and the permitting is that um, for any request for permits this year, um, the application will have a thing that comes up and says, just so you know, next year, um, these fees will become effective. So we are providing notice that way. So it's not a surprise.
Okay, thank you. Um, for the questions, Counsel? Hearing none, was that desire?
I'll second.
Who, Ripley? Okay, I have a motion by Counselor Ripley and a second by Counselor Vasquez. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll go down, do a walk on. Counselor Hancock?
Yes.
Counselor Vasquez?
Yes.
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Hart?
Yes.
Counselor Frosto?
Yes.
I also vote yes. Motion passes. And item D, curfew. Mr. Interim City Manager?
Yes, uh, this is a, a item is to adopt an ordinance establishing a curfew for juveniles to preserve public safety, reduce juvenile violence and to provide uh, enforcement procedures. I will turn the floor over to uh, Chief Lehman.
Good evening, Counsel. Um, if you recall, the deputy mayor brought this forward uh, some time back. This has gone through the Public Safety Committee uh, through several conversations. We were working on it with uh, Mr. Riley, our previous city attorney. And this is the final product that we um, agreed upon. I think it's been in your packets. What this does is it um, will establish a curfew there uh, from eleven PM to five AM, seven days a week. There are some provisions in there for different things. If they are um, accompanied by an adult, if they're uh, traveling to or from a religious uh, um, ceremony, if they're at a sporting event at the high school or something to that effect. Um, the first is a verbal warning, uh, second time in a year is a hundred dollar fine and the third time within a year is a two hundred and fifty dollar fine, um, which goes to the parents. Um, it's not criminal. Um, that's one of the things that the United States Supreme Court said that you cannot have criminal curfew laws. Uh, it has to be something that's a civil infraction. And so that's what uh, this is. I stand for any questions. Counselor Deputy Mayor might be able to answer him better than me. He wrote most of this, but.
Counselor Ripley?
Um, do we have a real problem out there with juveniles? Um, you know, between eleven and five or six?
Um.
Is it mostly juveniles or is it the people on the bikes from the hotels or?
I, I would say your, your biggest problem is probably your seventeen to twenty-five year olds during those hours. Yeah.
And this is only up to eighteen, right?
Uh, ye- uh, yes, seventeen, three hundred and sixty-four days. Yeah, once they're eighteen and they're an adult, this is.
Uh huh, okay.
Any other questions? Counselor Hart?
I'm sorry, that last part, the numbers, you said the uh, do most of the people that you see out after eleven o'clock and between five o'clock are how old?
Probably seventeen to twenty-five. Yakima, seventeen years old to twenty-five years old.
Okay.
Yeah, Yakima recently enacted uh, a curfew that I'd say probably three months ago. I reached out to them and asked them for stats. They said they didn't really have any. Uh, the program was too new, so I, I couldn't get anything.
Yes, Counselor Hancock?
Um, I've got a couple of questions. Um, so how are you going to work this into your um, staffing? I mean, it sounds like it's going to be a lot of staffing to me.
So that's one of the things we, we discussed a lot at Public Safety Committee. So just like any law, if, if somebody gets pulled over for running a red light or anything like that, the officer has discretion, whether they write the ticket or, or educate him on the dangers of running a red light, right? Um, so the same thing can happen here. The difficulty with this is, once we do take the juvenile, we are responsible for them. So it could be a, hey, you need to head home. Um, we might call your parents or your parents need to come get you. But the, there are times where parents don't, well, keep them. Well, we can't keep them. We can keep them for up to six hours by law. We can't keep them overnight or anything like that. So it, it could put a drain on, on resources. And that's where the sergeant's going to have to decide whether they enforce this and take the kid or they uh, tell them, hey, you know, there is a curfew. If, if you're out, you can get a ticket. If I catch you again tonight, we're gonna do that, but for right now, we're not giving, you know, we're busy. We don't have the resources to hold on to or pick you up.
That's, that's what I'm worried about. It'll be a law on the books that we're, we're really not enforcing.
Yeah, we're, uh, it, it is a tool to use, um, but it's not uh, something that's mandatory to enforce. It's a civil infraction, much like a, a traffic inf- infraction ticket, so.
And then under this part, police procedures and they're talking about decision to take into custody. And then under item I, it says, it is presumed necessary to take minors into custody for their safety and protection if they are under fourteen years of age and out after midnight. Is that, is midnight, the, the, everything else says eleven, is, is midnight the correct thing? Is there a different?
Uh, it, I believe that this starts at eleven was the hours we agreed upon. We did go back and forth on the hours in the Public Safety Committee several times, so that may have just been a typo.
Yeah. Counselor Vasquez?
Yeah, so right now you just said this, this could be a helpful tool to use. Could you elaborate with that?
Well, I mean, if, if you do run into a situation where you got some kids that um, you know, are, are prowling or something like that, you have a reason to pick them up. Right now you don't. Um, so you could pick them up. Hey, I'm not going to find them, but their parents need to come get them. We need to get these kids home because they're out doing things they're not supposed to. Um, but uh, at the same time, it, it's just, I, I think there's lots of laws on the books, to be honest with you, that um, education's important, right? And that you can use as an educational tool and like, when the kids are out after two in the morning, call the parents. Do you know your kids are out? Well, no, I didn't know. They snuck out or they're supposed to be at their friend's house spending the night. Um, so it could be used as, as an educational tool, but whether we um, I guess for lack of a better term, hammer the parents. I mean, I don't, I don't, that's not going to be my direction to, to the, I mean, this isn't like a revenue source to me, to be honest with you. It's not something, that's not going to be my direction to the officers.
You go ahead, Counselor Vasquez.
And not to put you on the spot, but you are chief of police. So um, what would, what's your point of view if we were to enforce this curfew?
Well, I think that it, it has to be balanced a lot because as Counselor Hancock brought up, it, it really could be a lot of man hours babysitting a bunch of kids down here. Um, and if we can't get ahold of parents, we have to call CPS to come get them. We cannot hold the kids longer than six hours. We'll get a finding by the State Department of Justice. Um, so we have to have the kids out of here within six hours.
Mm-hmm.
So you can only hold them for more than six hours for uh, certain crimes. And actually, we're not supposed to hold them here because we're not a juvenile facility for over six hours for anything, to be honest with you. But would they have to be transported or picked up by the parents within six hours?
Yeah.
Uh, Counselor Hancock?
Can you, can you come back with the cost analysis? Kind of something that?
There'd be no way to calculate that, yeah. I mean, we could pick up ten kids tonight and not pick up any for three months. It would, there would be no way to, yeah. I thought about that a lot because you said everything has a cost and I'm like, okay, how can I, and, and I'm like, I, I have no way to come up with this. I thought about it. I thought of you when I, when I was putting this sheet together.
I have highlights on the zeros. I understand why you didn't know because there's, there's some unknowns there, so.
So if, if I could say something since I wrote it or helped write it, um, originally I, I brought this up because yeah, there, you know, there is some crime, there's, there's, we, our police uh, chief needs a way to have more tools, right? Um, the state of Washington keeps taking them away. So um, you know, let's, let's help them out a little bit. And after a while, thinking it over, you know, it kind of made more sense in, in the sense of uh, keeping the youth safe, right? Um, we live in a community that sometimes it takes both parents working. So what happens when that happens, you know, it, it, they fall asleep at eight PM, the parents do, and nine PM and they have no idea where their kids are at. So at least with this, um, there could be a, a phone call, you know, from, from a police, a policeman, you know, hey, your kid's over here at the park. You know, they, they wake up the parents and, and now they realize, okay, they snuck out, right? So it's, I see it more now as a uh, kind of protecting our, our youth. I mean, they really don't have any business being out and about um, past eleven PM. I don't know, you know, anybody in here would want their sixteen, fourteen, fifteen year olds just wandering the streets, right? Um, and at that same point, we, we do need to, like Counselor Frosto said earlier, you know, provide more services for, for our youth. Um, you know, I would love to see the, the, the community center do something, right? We, we, we agreed that we were going to open or keep it open or, or rent it out and I just don't see that. So you know, it's let, let, let's, let's, let's start with this. Let's, let's help our youth uh, be safe and you know, if we, there's parents out there that want their youth at two in the morning, three in the morning, you know, wandering the streets, then that's a whole nother story. That's, that's beyond them. Go ahead, Counselor.
Yeah, and you know, um, during public comment, Mr. Salas actually said something that caught my attention. You know, he said, I drive around at night and I don't really see many, many youths out there and the ones that are out there are constantly out there. So those that are constantly out there, the police has no way to stop or question or ask, hey, what's up? Are you good? There's nothing that gives them the right to stop versus now with this curfew, it create a tool where they can actually keep updated with the people who are out there and the youth that are out there. Because if we recall, you know, this is for uh, the youth who are minors below the age of eighteen, if that's what I read correctly. So if they're eighteen and over, they can do whatever they want. This is not going to be applied to them. But if they're minors, what, who, what parent or what family members would want their minors who are fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, you know, out in the streets past eleven, all alone by themselves? So this would just be a tool where the first time it wouldn't even be a fine, the first time would be a warning. You know, a verbal communication, hey, this is now going to be applied into the city. Just um, don't be out here at night. It's dangerous because it has been. Um, just a way to help and I agree with Deputy Mayor, everything you said. This is to protect youth. At the end of the day, there's a lot of verbiage and language in here where if they're driving out of McDonald's or out of work, that's, this, this won't be applied to them. If they're coming outside of church, if they're with uh, an adult like me with the, with the youth, I'm an adult, so it wouldn't be applied to them. And at the end of the day, I do see this more as a tool to help our community. And I say, let's try it. You know, if, if, if all things come to worst case scenario, then we could easily remove it as well.
I think there's um, parents that will appreciate this as well. Uh, I don't know if you guys read my weekly report or not, but we have a habitual problem gang member kid here in town, well, actually lives outside of town, but his mom brought him in zip tied and over the weekend because she's had so many problems with him. And, and this, this particular kid, we've probably arrested twenty-five times. Right now, if he's walking down the street at three in the morning, we can't do anything. Now we'd have a reason to contact him and have his mom come get him. I don't know how that's going to go, but she'd probably come get him.
May I, Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor.
And to that point, Chief Lehman, you're, you're now able to arrest him. What are the resources that come after? If you say that you can't even hold them here. I mean, is it just about arresting and proving a point to a child? Or is it about providing resources, mentorship and relationship building to the youth that could eventually break these vicious and generational curses cycles really that, that we're seeing in our community because of a history of poverty, because of a history of drugs, because of a history of a lack of workforce development or, you know, or, or education or tech services provided to, to our youth. To me, I think it's much more than seeing someone at three in the morning and arresting them and keeping them to prove a point. I think it definitely has to, we have to pull this all the way back. And Deputy Mayor, you heard me when we were in the Public Safety Committee, I'm against punitive punishment and I'm all for supportive and restorative justice. And, and, and a movement to really start creating a healthy and more vibrant community that we live in and really start investing in our families. This, correct me somebody if I'm wrong, but this, this S M C or this, this city law municipal code has already existed. Because I remember even my older siblings, and you even mentioned this Deputy Mayor, because you're around my older siblings' age. This was enacted when y'all were in high school. Is that correct?
Yes, and it's currently still on the books, actually, just the way it's written.
It's actively in our codes, so.
Use it, though. It's criminal. It can't be criminal. That's what the United States Supreme Court changed. That's why we had to rewrite it.
So what's gonna be the difference now? Is it just?
Well, first off, we don't arrest anybody for this. This is a status offense. What we do is we pick them up, much like we would a kid at a domestic or something like that. We give them a ride down here. They're not gonna be handcuffed or anything like that. We're gonna be calling their parents to come get them. We're gonna educate the parents. I mean, I'm sure everybody here has seen our budget. I know that, I don't disagree with you that some things need to happen with resources and things like that, but we don't have a ton of resources. It's gonna be referring to D S H S who, that's, realistically, that's their job. CPS is to provide services to families. That's where they're gonna get referred to. When they come in, the parents are gonna get that information.
Well, I think you do have resources. That's why you have an S R O in, 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 in the high schools, right? I mean, and I've had conversations with you directly about trying to build a relationship and trust with our youth. And so I mean, there's one resource that I feel like it's, it's really been helping and I hear a lot of positive outcome from as well. You know, another thing, and Councillor Hancock pointed to this, it was one of my questions as well, was just even the burden on, on your staff. If, if there's gonna be any, what's the time that's gonna take out of your staff? The processing or even just the stopping and questioning. Maybe it's not a youth, maybe it's some, it's maybe it's a youth and it's, they're not even from Sunnyside. I remember also requesting specific information like Councillor Ripley had actually asked just a little bit ago around the data that proves that it's youth fifty, younger than eighteen that are committing some of these when there was an uptick in crime in, in the winter. And the, the information that was provided to me was very vague and you yourself said that y'all don't actually collect that data. So to me, I feel like, you know, and I've done my research, there's really no research, no data backing that this is actually successful. It's actually more harmful to our youth. And many of y'all on this diet serve as mentor to, to our youth. And, and again, I believe more in, in restoring a restorative process and a punitive process. And, 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 and that's where, where I stand on, on, on this curfew ordinance.
Yeah, I really stand by the fact that there's, there's no way to quantify what it's gonna take officer resource time. I mean, that's gonna be difficult to, to determine until we, maybe over six months or something, we, we can track it, but.
Councillor Ripley.
Like where you, you know, you say that you have the discretion to pick them up and find, you know, you're not gonna be going out searching for them. But if you find, you know, like one of the gang members, then you can do something with them.
What most likely is gonna happen is you're gonna see a kid walking down the road. He's obviously a minor. You're gonna pull up, you're gonna start talking to him. You're gonna say, hey, I need to give you a ride home. You're violation of curfew. Hop in the car, hop in the car. You're gonna take him to their parents' house, knock on the door and try and get the parents to get him. Because then you're done with them in twenty minutes. Otherwise, you get them down here, you gotta sit with them. Councillor Frosto brings up a good point, and this was talked about quite a bit in the Public Safety Committee. What if we pick up a kid from Yakima or Spokane? We're gonna have to call CPS to come get him. If I call CPS, that's two and a half hours. Their parents aren't gonna be able to get here in six, if their parents even come get them. That, and are they in a car and they're from Yakima? And we say, all right, well, you know, we have a curfew here. You need to head out of town or your parents are, we're gonna call your parents. And that kind of stuff, or if they're from Spokane and they ran away, I mean, there are some challenges to it. I'm not gonna lie. There are some definite challenges to it.
And, and I'm thinking, you know, you say you put the kid in the car and start taking him to parents and you get an emergency call. Yeah, what do you do with the kid?
Well, that's, that's, that's gonna be a judgment call. Depends on the emergency, I suppose, you know?
Any further questions?
Right now, if we pick up, pick up a kid for a crime, that officer's out of service. I mean, that's, you know, adults, you can come here and give them to the jail staff and turn around and say, I'll be back with a ticket. I gotta go handle this domestic or whatever. But with juveniles, that's, that's not the case.
And then all the paperwork?
The paperwork will follow. Yes, it always does. It's not like TV. It's not just action-packed for twelve hours at a time. It's action-packed for about ten minutes out of twelve hours.
Okay, councillor, there's no other questions. What is this, sire? Councillor?
Move to approve.
Our second. From motion by Councillor Vasquez and a second by myself to adopt an ordinance establishing a curfew for juveniles for, to preserve public safety, reduce juvenile violence and to provide enforcement procedures. Any debate?
I, I'm not against it. I'm just, I'd like to get more information on it. You know, I'd like to to have some time to spend with it because I really haven't had that much time to spend with it and get to know, you know, talk to some other cities or something and see what they got going on, how much time it's taking them.
What I'm gonna say on that is we, I mean, yeah, you're new to council, but we have been discussing this, you know, public safety and also here in council. So it's nothing new that, that we're bringing up, you know, to vote tonight. And, you know, if, if we don't try with something, then, you know, what, what are we gonna do?
Deputy Mayor?
Go ahead.
I actually semi-agree with, with, with Councillor Hancock right now. I mean, Councillor Hancock, I've been trying to do my research with neighboring cities or municipalities that have enacted a curfew or even across the country. And I haven't really been able to collect enough evidence to be able to make an informed decision on this to this day. So if, if, if we get an extension on this or if we're able to table this and, and you might come up with some other information that you can bring to the table, then I'm, I'm willing to, to hear that out as well. But I, to this day, have not found anything that provides me enough information to, to wholeheartedly say this, this, this is, can actually work here in Sunnyside.
Any further debate discussion?
I wouldn't be opposed to tabling it. I'm, I'm unsure on which way to go on it, you know, I see the, I see the pros, but I also see the cons with the police station. You know, do they have time to do all this? You know, they've got.
Like the chief said, they're not gonna concentrate on this. That is just like an extra tool. It's, it's, I see it as kind of like, like a taser, right? It's just an extra tool they have in their, in their pocket. They're not necessarily gonna use it all the time. It's, it's just gonna be something there to help communicate, hey, to the parents, hey, your kid's out, you know, it's two in the morning. Wake up, you know, come, come, come pick him up. If they're calling me at that time and I'm asleep, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be upset, you know, with, with, with my child and, and, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna address it appropriately. But if, if the parent doesn't know that the child's out there, then it's dangerous for, for, for you to be out in the middle of the night.
One of the things about, I think that we need to also remember that now is a really vulnerable time for middle school and high school kids. The kids, it just, a curfew directly impacts. And I'm sure the chief could tell you that the gang activity is gonna be going up. It's summer now. They've had already several things happen in the community in the last weekend that have been gang-related. And the kids there are not necessarily what you'd call over twenty-five. Most of them, they barely have their driver's license, I think. And so some of those kids are, you know, are also being, what is it, jumped into gangs? So they have to do various things to get that. So I kind of think that we really, if for no other purpose, if we put this curfew into, even if we do it as a trial period, perhaps, just to see how it's gonna work this summer. This, the summer is gonna be your biggest and your hottest time for kids getting in, getting into trouble, especially middle school kids. And those are the ones who are more likely to get picked up for being out when they're not supposed to be out. Because mom and dad got to work in the morning and already went to bed. But I would like to see us maybe put this on a trial basis. I'm, I'm in favor of the curfew. I had situations with my own children and different children who came to my house because they had to stay somewhere. I, I think we need to do this, if for no other reason for the safety of the children who may end up being in very dangerous situations if they're out past curfew.
Go ahead, councillor.
Other concern I have is that if if we're not going to do it uniformly for all kids that are, you know, just as a tool for certain kids, then this is, this has a has the potential, and I'm not saying that the officers would, but it has the potential not to be uniformly used. And that, that worries.
Understand.
May I?
Councillor Frosto.
It seems like it's a, it's, there's a divided concerns or sentiment, I should say, around this. Have we ever thought of bringing this to the city? Or having a listening session around this? Like, I mean, I know we were doing various listening sessions at the beginning of the year or even last fall to hear what parents have to say. At the end of the day, they are the ones that are gonna be hit with fines. And we're already living in impoverished community, let me remind you. Or even just what the youth have to say. What families have to say, maybe what other police departments have to say.
Yeah, you have a good point. I mean, I've, I've been talking to different parents and I believe, Councillor Frosto, you, a few months back, you were on the phone and, and you asked your mom and she was okay with it. So I mean, there's a lot of parents, you know, out there that are okay with it and they, they wanna see this happen. You know, just as an extra, an extra layer of protection for, for the youth.
Let me remind you that my mom hasn't had a juvenile for like over fifteen years in her house and times have changed.
Anything else?
No, but I myself, you know, like I, I do work with youth and I've actually been around downtown late at night and I have seen youth, young kids drinking, smoking, getting high in the middle of weekends. Why? Because they think it's cool, because they wanna be out there. They wanna be, they wanna have that cool influence around alcohol and and what's, what's there to, for their own protection. There's nothing in place for their own protection. And parents, many parents are not aware that their children are out there in the middle of the night. Like Deputy Mayor says, and I have spoken to some parents, they're sleeping. Kids are, they're jumping out of their windows. Why? Because I've, I've seen it. And, and it's, and it's happening and they're minors, they're kids, and we should be having something to help them. And I agree, you know, with, with Councillor Frosto, let's have resources. Let's have a plan as well, not just to discipline or to scare them, but also to help and support because that's very, very important for youth. And, you know, programs like Mr. Salas' organization, maybe even connecting that program with the officers, you know, hey, go and check this program out, be a part of it. They'll feel maybe like they're, they actually belong to something that's far greater than themselves and feeling a part of a family. Because at the end of the day, what, what they're living, the influences around them, is what's always gonna make their decisions either be good ones or not good decisions. And that's very important.
You know, I kind of like that idea. Is, is, I don't know if the chief can, you know, talk to this, about this. Is there a way to provide a flyer of the different nonprofits that work with youths, once an officer, you know, talks to a youth, a minor?
Yeah, hundred percent. And we do have some of those resources back there that we provide families now. A lot of the resources for what you folks are talking about come through the state. And so that's where a lot of the resources or people are sent to now. You know, there's places that specialize in domestic violence. We send them to the lighthouse, you know, the, the different things like that. But and Councillor Frosto is correct, the, the S R O does make a lot of contacts with kids in the school. Unfortunately, right now they're out of school for the next three months, but the S R O is, is a good resource to, to talk to kids, but to actually provide resources, that, most of that comes through the state. Now, there are a bunch of different community groups around that can help families. But we don't necessarily always have a full list of what's going. I mean, unless I know about it, we don't, we don't know about them, so.
Go ahead, Councillor Frosto.
This reminds me, I mean, have, have we not even maybe reached out to the superintendent, to the board of directors at the Sunnyside for the Sunnyside School District, for different leaders within the school district, teachers, educators, mentors within the, the school district to get more information about this and the direct impacts on, on our youth who are already struggling with, with high numbers of, of just, you know, mental health, suicidal ideation, gangs, poverty, drugs. I mean, there, there, there are folks doing the work in, in community. And I'm gonna go again to my previous point that I will not make a decision when I, it's not the most informed decision and I haven't been reaching out to the people and the folks that to their municipalities, if that's our school district, if that's mentors within our school district, counselors within our school district, other nonprofit organizations that are really, you know, that, that, that have the, are doing the work, boots-on-the-ground type of work directly with our youth.
We have a program with the Sunnyside School District that, actually, it's countywide. If a child is contacted in a by law enforcement, usually we're talking about domestics. They have a fire at their house, they're contacted at a shooting or something like that. We put a code in, in our computer and the school gets a report every morning that that kid was contacted by law enforcement. Mom and dad got in a fight, kid witnessed it, whatever. Any age group within the school district, it, it's countywide, so that if a child is at another school district, they'll get notified. And they're contacted by counselors. And then teachers are notified, hey, you know, if this kid's falling asleep in class, it's because there was a domestic at their house last night at two in the morning. They were awake for several hours. Or, you know, you know, sibling passed away in a car crash or whatever. So those kids are contacted. So we do do that through the school now, and we've done that for a couple of years. But again, we're, we're in summertime, so it's tougher to get the most resources to.
Deputy Mayor, may I? There's no other question?
Is there any more debate discussion? We have a motion on the table.
I have, I have one more question for Rob, or for, sorry, excuse me, Chief Lehman.
Go ahead, councillor.
You know, going back to Councillor Hancock's point about the burden on, on your staff or maybe like the, the increase in staff hours. You know, going back to the fireworks situation last year, how overburdening that was to your staff. And the implementation process was really just a bust altogether in community. Like, do you see this actually working and being streamlined effectively within the police department when we couldn't even handle the fireworks ordinance last year?
Well, I think, I, I think that, that you can't really compare the two. When, when you have the fireworks, I mean, there's thousand residences lighting off fireworks in the city with, with the, with the juveniles you're talking about, you know, may, maybe five contacts a month this might affect. And it's gonna depend on how the officer handles it, whether they take them straight home, bring them here, give them a warning right there on the side of the road, tell them it's time to go home. There's a lot of ways an officer could handle this and, and we're gonna try and, we'll try and track time if this is approved. And, and get something back to you maybe after a quarter or six months of use. But until then, I, I can't quantify it. I'm sorry. But until then, I, I can't quantify it. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, counselor.
How, how, how much do you think you will use this tool?
I think six times a month. You know, I think that there, there are, are kids that are identified in town that if, if they're out and about, it, it could be two in the afternoon and we're, we're thinking this kid's probably out doing something not supposed to. They've been a gang member, they've been arrested with guns three times, they're a juvenile, they keep getting released. And if that kid's out after hours, they're going to get brought here every time. And their parents are going to get called. Now, whether they get a ticket or not, I mean, I, I don't think that's going to be really my direction. I don't think that punitively, that's what we're about. I think it's education, hey, your kid's out, or I can't control my kid, what can I do? Well, you can file an at-risk youth petition with Department of Social Health Services and CPS, you know, here's the resources for that. But I think there's going to be a lot of kids that get a lot of warnings and maybe a phone call to parents and hey, they're on their way home, we just contacted them. Out and about, they were with their girlfriend at the park or whatever. I think that's what's going to happen most of the time.
Go ahead, Counselor Vazquez.
You know, and you get, you, some of you say, I guess, want more information, right? More information about if this will be effective, if this will work, if, what's the point behind even implementing a curfew? And I, I kind of say, well, let's give it a shot. We'll have results here in our city. We'll have results from chief, we'll have results from maybe some of the youths who had this experience. We could even have results with the officers who have had to enact this new curfew. And we could come back, you know, circle it, bring it back up to a circle and just talk and say, is this working? Is this not working? Is this something that we can continue to have moving forward? Or let's just end it altogether. We could do that as well. Like if it's not effective, if it's not helping, if then what, six months down, come by and we talk to Rob Leitman, our chief officers, we could even have conversations with them and ask, but what are your thoughts about this? And if they feel like it hasn't helped, there's no point in it, then that's, we could easily, again, you know, remove it. And that's just where my thoughts are.
You know, if, if anything, this could create a positive interaction between the youth and, and the police officer, you know, taking them home. You never know what, what kind of position the youth is in at the time. And, and you know, what if he starts to share, hey, you know, I'm being trafficked or I'm, you know, this is going on, you know, it, if it saves one life, it, it's, it's going to make a difference.
Yeah, or even like you saying, I don't feel safe at home. You know, my parents are arguing, so I'd rather leave. And we could create and share those resources. And I would very much, if we do move this forward, I would want a, like a brochure or some page for us to work on one, where we could create all the resources that Sunny Side does have to offer. Including just everything that we can find with times, hours and contact information.
I agree.
I'd like to call for the, for the question.
Okay, council, we have a motion. I'll repeat it since we've had a long discussion. I've got a motion by Counselor Vazquez and a second by myself to adopt an ordinance establishing a curfew for juveniles to preserve public safety, reduce juvenile violence and to provide enforcement procedures. I'll go down for roll call. Counselor Hancock.
Yes.
Counselor Vazquez.
Yes.
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Counselor Hart.
Yes.
Counselor Frosto.
No.
I also vote yes, motion passes. Thank you, council. And that was a long debate, but it's good, good that we get it out, discussion, yeah. Moving on to the next one, Public Works Act policy, Mr. Internment City Manager.
Yes, this is a, a, I have to approve a resolution adopting an updated Public Records Act policy pursuant to the Public Records Act, RCW forty-two point five six and our city third rule of justice.
Okay, so we've presented, I presented this policy, draft policy on June second and then June ninth. I've made some corrections that council has advised me on and also the attorneys such as removing the flat fee. And then adding the specific time limits on records reviews in office. And then adding the permissions to the public records officer to have access to all, all records. And so just a few tweaks and that's it.
Okay, council, is there any questions? Hearing none, what's on the side of council?
Move to approve the resolutions, adopting the updated Public Records Act policy pursuant to the Public Records Act, RCW forty-two point fifty-six.
Do a second.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Counselor Hart, a second by Counselor Ripley, as stated by Counselor Hart. Any debate? Hearing none, Counselor Hancock?
Yes.
Counselor Vazquez.
Yes.
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Counselor Hart.
Yes.
Counselor Frosto.
Yes.
I also vote yes, motion passes. All right, so items from council members, mayor's appointment for boards and commissions. There is some boards still vacant. If Cackey, our city clerk can help me with stating what those are.
We currently have two vacancies on the lodging tax advisory committee. One is a collector of the lodging tax and one is a recipient of those funds. We have three vacancies on the Sunny Side Arts Commission, two vacancies on the Climate Resilience Advisory Team, and one in the Housing Authority.
And I believe I saw an email for climate resilience today.
We did, yes. And I just, I'm going to respond and ask him to submit the application and so we should be okay with that soon.
And just to give an update on the housing one, we do have some applicants, but I, we have been working with the Rules Committee and hopefully we can meet as soon as the mayor gets back. I'll get with him tomorrow, see when he can meet, so we could get this, you know, appointed, the sooner the better. And yeah, if there's any other community members out there that wish to serve on these boards and commissions, please get ahold of our city clerk and we can move forward with that. Council request status report.
Okay, pulling that up right now, one moment. So the first is dog breeding ordinance. Hector, do you have an update? For animal control?
At this very moment, I do not have an update. I didn't know I was taking care of it, but I will see what I can do about getting an update on the dog breeding ordinance and so. Oh, you got it?
I have a meeting next week with the countywide, talking about some animal control issues and this is going to be one of the discussions there. Next Tuesday or Wednesday.
Thank you, Chief Lehman.
Thank you.
Very good, Hector.
You're off the hook. And we got the fourth.
That one's done.
In the fourth of July.
Yellowstone Trail.
And we're just continuing to work on that.
Yeah, so HLA and I are working on that. We are going to be doing our best to contact some of the committees to see if we can get some funding. I did have our parks crew go over and weed eat. They were supposed to spray the cracks also till we can at least make it more presentable. There is a sign that I have talked to the street department and hopefully we will be able to put it up for you. And put it wherever their landmark is at. So if you have any questions, I'd be more than welcome to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Mignolet. So the next one is temporary vendors without permits. And I was going to wait for my council report for this, but since we're on topic, council, we all received an email from Mr. Taylor. And he is requesting guidance as to, you know, a subcommittee. And I responded to him where, you know, maybe we could use the Public Works Subcommittee that we have now to go over it instead of creating a whole new one. And the ones currently serving on there will be Counselor Brosna, Counselor Frosto and Counselor Hancock. Do you feel up to task to meet with our public, with Cory and get that going? Yeah, okay. Mr. Taylor, maybe shoot them an email tomorrow and see what their schedule is. I think Mr. Brosna will be here tomorrow, so he'll have a, some input on what dates he has available. Yeah. Is there anything you'd like to report while we're on the topic?
Not necessarily. Now, we did go out and check, we've got a dozen vendors currently operating. And they're all licensed. I've got a list of them on there if anybody wants it.
Okay.
I know there are some that pop up here and there. We are contacting when we see them.
Okay. Yeah, if you could shoot us that email with, with the list, all the council, I'd be.
And I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, counsel.
So on that list, is it licensed, like business license or also licensed and approved by the Department of Health?
Yeah, it's both.
Both, okay. Yeah, I'd like to see the list as well.
As our mobile vendor, what I'll do is attach our mobile vendor requirements and, you know, the whole process that that goes through to get their license.
Perfect. Thank you so much for going out there and checking it all out. Appreciate it.
Good to see that.
And is there another one?
The fire hydrant parking lines.
So yes, obviously we are painting streets right now. On my report that I sent to the council is they are painting the Beryl tracks right now. Moving forward in the second half of painting, talking to my street department supervisor, we're not quite sure if we have enough yellow to obviously get the hydrants, parking lines painted. So if you can point me in the right direction, if you guys would like it done, obviously we would like to get it done for you. Where we will be able to take some of that money out to provide paint. Obviously, paint is not cheap and if we are going to order it, we would have to order it now. So when the second half gets here, we are able to paint, paint those street curbs.
Could we get like a quote as to how much money you guys would need in order to cover?
Yes, most definitely. I can reach out to my street supervisor and we can, we can get a quote and I'll be able to email it to the whole council. So if we can find money, you know, that'd be.
Yeah, because I was pulling outside, out of Safeway and on the road, all along Safeway on Sixth Street.
Yes, I noticed that.
Empty. I've been driving around like almost everywhere and there's like, all, all the yellow is so faded. It's been peeled off. It's been many, many, many.
Yeah, yes, many, many years. And I, I've done my due diligence to drive around also and see where else we can be painting. And obviously it has been neglected for years that I can see. Like I said, money crisis wise is obviously the biggest deal for everybody. So, but yeah, I can obviously get a quote and the direction you guys would like me to go, I'd be more than happy to go with it.
Counselor Hart, you had a question?
No, I'll come up with it.
Perfect. Well, thank you for that.
Yes.
What about that enterprise fund? What was that used for?
That's for different.
What was that?
Different.
That's, I think that's a different thing for enterprise monies. Kelly, what are those used for, enterprise?
So we have several different enterprise funds. The street department is one of those. But I think Hector's point was that the amount needed for the paint, for the fire hydrants was not a budgeted item. If there are other places where the council feels we could either reduce cost or maybe cut different projects, that is always an option, but it wasn't necessarily in the twenty-five budget. I think that was brought up after the budget was already approved.
And Ms. Koski, maybe there's something, a topic for our finance subcommittee we could discuss.
Certainly.
Thank you. Okay, and that was it, right? Okay, so moving on, other reports, announcements and our questions by council, Counselor Hancock.
Tomorrow starts the AWC conference. I don't know how many people are going. I plan on attending and starting tomorrow. And a bunch of us volunteered at the museum this weekend to help get some stuff going. It was kind of interesting seeing the plates from the old Planters Hotel and, and other things related to the Scheller family and all that kind of stuff. They do have work groups every third Saturday, ten AM, so everybody's welcome to come help.
Thank you. Counselor Vazquez.
Just an update, I did attend the Summerale Festival here in downtown. And I just wanted to shout out the Sunny Side Morning Daybreak, I believe, Rotary. Just for all of your guys' community service for showing up, being there. I saw so many people showing up since Friday, setting everything up. Then the event was on Saturday, right? Correct. Yeah. So then all day Saturday. And then, I kid you not, I saw people out there till the moment I left downtown as well. Just cleaning up and putting things away and then just really good job, everyone. So thank you for that and for doing that for the community.
Counselor Ripley.
Yeah, I, in Chief Lehman's report, he said that him and his wife had bought popsicles for the swim meet. Was it the swim meet? And that the officers handed them out and stuff? I think that's awesome. It gives a good rapport for the policemen and the kids. I appreciate that.
Counselor Hart.
Yeah, I, I just want to go back to a couple of on the history of when the, on the fourth of July, as afterwards, I was thinking, we did send out application, we started the application project for the five thousand dollars well back in February. It kind of slipped through the cracks in March. At that point, the city finance director said it wasn't in there and I asked, and I asked the city manager and her at the time if they could see if they could put it back in so we could vote on it. That didn't happen in April. Zabel left. The finance director left and then we resubmitted the application again in mid-May, got lost on the city manager's desk, first of, then he was released. We resubmitted it on June the second. And then we came to city council on the that following work session meeting. So we had been to, to clear up that confusion about whether we'd been looking for the money previously. Yes, since I found out that it had not been put into the twenty-five, I got a little confused on that, but I did check with our alliance secretary so that I now have my complete timeline down. It wasn't that we weren't trying, trying to do it at the last minute. It was just with all the confusion, all the upheaval, all the changes in the office, it just sort of slipped through the cracks. So no one's really, there's no room, place to stick that. It's just, that's how that happened. But I did want to make that clear. The other thing that I did want to say again is that I know that we're all, we're all grateful to have Mr. Bridger here as city manager for the time being and appreciate that. We don't want to forget that we first need to ask you what we want. And then you ask your staff, even though they might be your staff for just a little while, they're still your staff. And we want to make sure that we follow that protocol because otherwise you just get to twiddle your thumbs and say, hey, end of the day.
Well, I thank you for your support. And, you know, when I met staff early on, you know, I let them know, we're in the information business. You know, we generate information, we disseminate information. We, you know, we have, we have three sets of customers. We have our external customers, which is the public. We have our internal customers, which is our divisions, and then we have the city council. So that's what we're here for and that's what we should look forward to is providing information to the best of our ability so that we can, you know, adequately, you know, address the issues of, of, of the public and address issues of the council and, 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 you know, do the right thing for the city and, and pass good legislation when it's necessary and, and repeal bad legislation when it's not necessary. So anyway, thank you for hiring me for the interim time.
Just wanted, just wanted to make sure that we were using our proper protocol because, you know, we don't, we want to stay in our lane too, you know.
Counselor Frosto.
Nothing to report, but I think we might be getting to this point of this Saturday's retreat.
Yeah, that's coming up next here shortly.
And I digress. I'll, I'll allow that to come up.
So, and nothing else you said, right? On your end, okay. So I myself also attended the AFS thing, you know, big shout out to Daybreak Rotary. You guys do an amazing job, always do. The weather probably could have been better, but it was, it was okay. You know, all the proceeds go to helping the, the pool this year. So that's a, that's a big win for the pool. Also. So that's a, that's a big win for the pool. Um, also rural subcommittee, if uh we can meet sometime this week, I'll check with the mayor tomorrow to see what his dates are. And uh we could continue meeting on that. Um, let me see here. And that's all I got. So the next one, uh Jackie, appoint voting delegates to the A W C conference. My understanding it's Councilor Hancock and Councilor Ripley that are attending this year? Um, do we need a, just a first?
I'm trying to see cuz I think that the business meeting was June twentieth is what I'm seeing here. And so we may not need it, but in case um they do have another meeting, let me double check.
If I remember correctly, from the Vancouver, we we do vote.
There is a.
There is a vote in during the week, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, it's on Thursday.
So maybe if you uh, if two of you are going, then whoever's the primary and the alternate.
Who would uh wanna be the primary and alternate?
I'm not sure.
Okay, Ms. Hancock, you'll be the primary and Ms. Ripley will be the alternate. So that is squared away. Next item is D. We have um the council, their staff is asking for direction on regarding the planning retreat. Uh, we have planned for the twenty-eighth. Um, what is, what is the feeling of council? Do we postpone it? Do we go with it forward and continue it?
We postpone it. I think we postpone it.
I kind of think we gotta move ahead with it. We really gotta get started on figuring out what we're gonna be starting with our budget for the next year. We need to really be putting it together, at least some preliminary strategies. Um, I hate to keep putting it off, but maybe that's all the only option that we have.
I agree with Councilor Hart. Um, I don't see why we can't do this. It's gonna be up to Mr. Bridges. Um, if if he's up for it, I remember last year we had a a retreat and the city manager was um the facilitator. We didn't need to hire a facilitator. I'm not sure why we were this year, but that's just besides the point. If Mr. Bridges feels comfortable with, you know, kind of facilitating, then I say we move forward and don't let anything, you know, start stacking up and.
Yeah, and I'd have to agree because then if we propose postpone it and then we move forward and we're never gonna have time to come back to it.
I agree.
At least we can get some ideas on paper about what kinds of strategies, what kinds of things we already know we're in, like in our tip plan, where are we going with that? You know, where we're at with the wells. I mean, just some preliminary things of what we're gonna need to be working on and budgeting for for the next year.
I agree.
I mean, that's kind of why I'm thinking, just, just to get us started, we may have to come back to it when we do do our our budget uh hearings. But at least we could get a, some, some, some thoughts started on it.
Mr. Bridges or?
Kelly had her hand up.
Yeah, um, so I believe that uh uh Mr. Gonzalez had a consultant lined up to to do some facilitation. If that's the desire of the council or I can do the facilitations, up to you, uh, how, which direction you want me to go with that, so.
Last, well, last I heard, um, the person wasn't sure. Uh, is 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 he good for this hearing? Whoever it is?
He just sent me a preliminary um uh agenda or schedule, if you will, not an agenda. Uh, and so if if we wanted to move forward that direction, we can. Um, I can, I can do the same, so.
No, I mean, if it's, if it's set up, I, for some reason, I thought I overheard that, you know, he wasn't, wasn't ready to go.
If he is, I mean.
Counsel? We push forward this Saturday?
And and we have a facilitator and what is the?
Yes.
Facilitator.
I'm not aware of the cost right now. I'll I'll get that information to you, so.
Deputy Mayor?
Go ahead.
Is the facilitator's agenda aligning with what we wanna do now? Or is it gonna be not a good use of our time? I mean, it, it seemed like when we were talking about this, we were talking about um eventually or creating, I think it was uh adding to our strategic plan um as well. And that was, I think, gonna be the purpose of the facilitator to come in and help us.
Did you plan it?
But I now I know Councilor Hart's mentioning the budget, so I I I'm just, I'm just thinking what's the best use of our time right now when we're really in this interim.
True.
Well, ultimately, it's it's council that decides any, you know, any plans or anything going forward. And I believe that if council provides a good guidance and a good plan, um, there's no reason why anybody, you know, anybody can follow that plan.
What time did we have set for this Saturday?
This Saturday, yeah.
What time?
Uh, was it?
Nine A M?
Nine A M?
Here, Fifth and Law Justice?
Yes. Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry, she keeps raising.
There's just some information that I think might be helpful in making a decision. We have already done our kickoff call with ClearGov, which will be the new budgeting software that we're using that's cloud-based. So we don't have that information in the software yet. We're working on the implementation phase of that. And so to be on Saturday, we could do broad overview generalizations of what should be in the budget. But to actually work on the budget isn't really gonna be possible until all of that information is imported into the software.
No, and I, and I don't think we were gonna discuss anything budget related on this one. I think in August is when we start our budget retreat. Yeah.
I think.
Go ahead.
I was just thinking in terms of the fact that we, you know, we sort of kind of have an idea where we're going budget-wise. But then also, what are we gonna have as practicalities? You know, what are we gonna be looking at to try to budget as opposed? You know, what is really, when you talk about strategic plans, you wanna know what are you gonna be doing, not this this year, but further on down the road. But do we have a copy of the agenda of what uh the counselor was going to, consultant was going to be using?
No, no, all I've got so far is a a a basic timeline in an email. That's all I've received from the, from the consultant. And I can provide that to you tomorrow if you'd like, so I can.
That might be useful to.
It it, it's more just uh the sessions, you know, the time nine o'clock to ten o'clock, ten o'clock to to.
Does it say what we're gonna talk about?
Not necessarily, not necessarily, not 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 to my recollection, but like I said, I can get that to you tomorrow.
I believe in the previous meeting, there was some sort of breakdown. The manager was, I think, if, yeah, we maybe could just search that document and and confirm with the facilitator.
Paperwork in the office there.
So council, um, am I getting more of a yes? Continue, push forward?
I I I did ask about the cost of the facilitator. We can do it in-house.
How would you like to handle that?
I've I've done it before, so uh I can handle it, so.
So is this something that we could, uh, I I guess you could find out what the cost is and and send an email to council?
Yep.
Okay.
Has, maybe also has that already been put into place? Is it prepaid or is it postpaid or do we have a contract laid out for the facilitator? I think those are some things we'd probably need to know as well.
Can you, can you repeat that?
Just thinking in terms of the fact that we already have some sort of a contract with this facilitator, uh, stating how much that's gonna be. And is there a clause for getting out of it and not losing money on it? Could?
We'll find that out.
Okay, thank you.
So either, either way, let's, let's push forward for this Saturday, either uh be Mr. Bridges or the facilitator if council agrees. Pretty good? All right. Um, that being said, upcoming council meetings. Jackie, you have those for us?
Okay, so June twenty-eighth is a special meeting, strategic planning at nine A M here in the council chambers. July seventh is our study session and we'll be discussing council code of conduct, youth advisory boards, and um the city manager's spending authority. Then our next regular meeting is July fourteenth, where you'll be receiving our public hearing on the six-year tip and then action after.
Thank you, Jackie. And uh council, just if you have anything.
Do you have one for the?
Oh.
June, June thirtieth meeting?
Oh, yes, June thirtieth, um, at five thirty. To add that on here.
So make sure you put that on your guys' calendar for the thirtieth. All righty, well, city manager reports. Mr. Entrom City Manager?
Thank you. Uh, well, uh, you know, it's been an interesting two weeks. Um, I've been working on uh the uh the railroad property sales, making sure that's continued to go forward. The Monson property, um, uh, we just received the updated prices from that uh today, um, which we uh we share with the council. Collected bargaining agreements, uh, there are several of them that need to be uh continue to work on, uh, then working closely with Kelly on that. And then, of course, attorneys. That's pretty much monopolizing pretty much my time right now. So uh, there is a uh, we did get a I wouldn't say it's a letter, it was an email uh stating their intent to uh uh purchase some land at at Monson. That I have a call in with the uh uh real estate agent tomorrow to discuss uh what they, their wants and their needs and and their terms that that they're, they're offering, so. And uh it doesn't quite line up with the price sheet that uh we received today, so that's kind of a big what-if. Um, anyway, so that's where we're at.
All right. So I, I'm not seeing it on here, but um do your staff, the leadership, they wanna do their reports or did you do a quick rundown?
I don't.
Anybody, anybody wanna add anything?
So I come with paperwork. Uh, I know council wants some paperwork, so.
You betcha.
Mr. Bridges, if you can, please pass that up to council.
Thank you.
So a little backstory, obviously, at the corner of Na- South Ninth Street and East Lincoln, uh, we have a building right there. That's where our sewer uh lift station is at, the building. Our main sewer lift station and storm drain lift station is in the middle of that intersection. I, I guess back in years back, prior to my arrival, um, the school district was on a lease with the city for eight hundred dollars for the building, the the current sewer building that is there right now, that is marked. As of twenty sixteen, uh, we have not paid that eight hundred dollars, uh, nor renewed our lease. Talked to Mr. Maxwell and Mrs. Witz. They, we would like to obviously lease out west property on the school district west of that building. Cuz that would currently go with the wastewater uh utility improvements that we are working on uh for the seed grant. Talking to them, they're not in it to get reimbursed for anything. Uh, they're not in it to make money. Um, obviously, they will like, or we would like to lease that green area and the building together. Um, they, I gave you guys a copy of the contract for the lease agreement on the next three pages. Um, that way you may read it over. And if you have any questions for later on, you guys are more than welcome to contact me. Moving forward with this, we need to get this signed. Um, obviously, moving forward for the seed agreement for this whole project, um, but that is probably one of the questions they will ask us is do we have an agreement with the school district for the property to be moved? The current status of that lift station right now is overwhelmed old. Uh, it's been there apparently for years. Um, so uh, we would like to move the lift station to the new current place on the school district ground. Um, we would still need to keep that current one there for the storm drain lifts, um, that is continuing to go, that goes in there. So um, the school district has obviously gave us a proposal of for twenty-four hundred dollars for the whole property that we would be leasing, which would be the building that we're on right now and the property that's west of it. So if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy.
Go to Councilor Ripley.
Twenty-four hundred a month?
Twenty-four hundred a year, man. Yes, yes.
Any other questions? Do, go ahead, Councilor.
So the property that you're talking about is there, there's the parking lot, the the teacher parking lot?
Yes.
And there's that grassy area?
Yes.
It just, it faces uh Lincoln Avenue?
Yes, that would be the area.
I'm just trying to.
Nope, correct. And that's why I I tried to take a good aerial picture, so uh and put enough uh information on there that way.
Thank you.
I have a question. Is, is this for information only right now or do you expect?
No, so my recommendation is obviously, I would like to um have either the deputy mayor or the mayor be able to sign the, for the lease agreement. Um, but the, the school district alone would like to wait till obviously the fiscal year that they have. Uh, they start September first through Au- uh August thirty-first. So if we were able to get the okay from council, obviously, we would sign the lease agreement for uh September first. But at least if we go to the seed in July. Go ahead. Oh, i- in July, um, we'll answer that question if they do ask us, do you guys have a place for it? Okay, so.
So mid, is this gonna come back before council has a resolution then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it will come back as a resolution.
Okay.
So, but I wanted to give you guys the heads up and also the information, um, that way, when I do bring it up to the resolution, you guys have everything in front of you.
Got it. No, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mihya. Uh, council, any further questions?
Just one here. I was just reading this one, the part, the lease agreement, and it says uh, terms of lease commence on September one, two thousand twenty-four, terminate August thirty-one, two thousand twenty-five.
Well, that, so when I approach uh Mr. Maxwell and Mrs. Witz, uh, apparently that was, they had already been in talks um, to Mr. Doral and Andrew prior to my coming in aboard. Obviously, it was left there when Mr. Sanchez left, um, and, but I I am picking it up now. So going forward, um, we are able to do what we need to do.
Thank you. I just wondered if the dates were from a different.
Yes, it was, it was prior, so.
All right. Well, see, no more questions. Thank you, Mr. Mihya.
Yep.
And no executive session uh for tonight? Or chief? No, no, you're, you're up, so step up to the plate.
I'll be very brief, spend some time putting some stats together for sharing with you. So our total year-to-date uh emergency responses is two thousand and two, as of uh this morning. Hundred and eighty-six of which would have been in the last couple of weeks. Uh, breaks down to ten fire responses, a hundred and forty-one EMS responses, three EMS no transports, three motor vehicle accidents, eight service calls and twenty-one good intent calls and zero fire alarm calls, which is great. People are getting their fire alarm service and not knowing the false alarm. So let's uh call that a win. Um, and then I always like to report very proud staff of our year-to-date training hours is two thousand and fifty-one. So um they're doing a good job keeping that going. A couple of highlights for us, um, apparently it was the week of vehicle fires. We respond to multiple vehicle fires, um, as well as a brush fire in the vicinity of Crescent Bridge. So that was uh taken care of pretty quickly by on-duty crews. Um, that's it, real brief. Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Chief Lehman?
Okay, so I send my weekly report, so I think you got most of the information. I just wanna update you on one uh current uh incident that's going on right now. So there were some kids walking down the road about five thirty, car pulled up, shot at them, nobody was hit. It looks like officers have identified the vehicle and they're trying to locate it now, so that's kind of developing. It'll be in my weekly report next week what the outcome is. The foundation, just a quick update, um, we donated five hundred dollars to the pool for Lions to use. The golf tournament and silent auction's coming up on July seventeenth. If you don't golf, that's fine. Um, if you're interested in coming out, maybe bidding on a silent auction item, we'll be at the golf course at three o'clock. Um, we have a meeting next week to look at future projects. Two of the projects that we'll be talking about are the holiday giveaways that we've done the last couple of years, the the meal giveaways, and then some type of a back-to-school giveaway. And then tomorrow, we have.
and then some type of a back-to-school giveaway. And then tomorrow, we have uh, public safety testing coming in, doing a sergeant's test, so.
All right, thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Good.
Hey, council, um, there being nothing further business before council and without objection, I adjourn this meeting at eight, twelve P M.
Early one.